Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the League of Women Voters Duluth, I'd like to welcome you to this evening's School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Julie O'Leary and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters. I will be your moderator for this evening's program. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization. While we as the League do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed by the candidates here tonight are their own and not those of the League of Women Voters. We do encourage you, as we encourage our members as individuals, to become involved in your community and the political party of your choice. It's our purpose to provide you with an opportunity to hear the candidates discuss the issues that are important to you face-to-face. There's never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time setting such as this. So if your questions are not addressed, feel free to contact the candidates directly or stay after the event to talk with the candidates. The forum is also being videotaped and may be viewed in its entirety at lwduluth.org and on PAC TV. The format for this evening will include an opening statement from each of the candidates, questions from the League of Women Voters, and, time permitting, audience questions. Cards have been distributed for you to write down questions, which I believe have been collected. If there's anyone who would still like to submit a question, you can raise your hand and one of the individuals with postcards will get to you and get you a card and also collect your question from you. In order to be fair to all candidates -- oh, I'm sorry. There will also be a closing statement from each candidate. In order to be fair to all the candidates and to make the best use of our time tonight, I ask that the audience remain silent and withhold your applause until the end of the forum. I would also ask the audience at this time to please turn off any cell phones, pagers, or other devices that might buzz or beep or make a noise that may be distracting during the forum. At this time, I would like to introduce the candidates for school board for the at-large seat: Michael Murneke and Ryan Stauber. Candidates for District 2 are Judy Saliga-Punko and Lauren Martel. And candidates for District 3, Bill Westholm and John Donahue. And thank you all for being with us here tonight. The order of speaking was determined in advance by drawing numbers, and we will begin with that order of speaking for the opening statement and the first round of questions, and then we will rotate after the first round of questions. Lauren Martel will answer first in the opening round in the first question. So we will begin our -- and Lauren will be followed by Judy Saliga and Bill Westholm going this way and then starting again at the beginning. We'll all get the hang of this. So we'll begin our forum with a one-minute opening statement from each of our candidates, and Lauren Martel will go first. And for those of you who aren't familiar with the microphones, I've been told that you push the button on your left-hand side when your light is on, your microphone is on, and if you would turn your microphone off when you are not speaking. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming today -- tonight, I should say, giving up such a beautiful evening. I actually didn't write an opening statement. I should have looked a little more closely at the directions. But it's obvious that we have a lot of challenges with the Duluth School District. A lot of financial concerns. We've lost a lot of students. We need to bring those students back. We've lost a lot of teachers, and we have to bring the teachers back. We have to get the class sizes down. There's just a lot of problems, and there's a lot of positive things as well. And I'm hoping that tonight we can address all these problems and look forward to the future, find solutions hopefully tonight, and some consensus in the community. And that's why I'm here. I'm hoping that we can reach out to the community and bring the full community back into these discussions.
Hi, everyone. I'm Judy Saliga-Punko, and I am running for school board. I'm pretty excited about what's happening in our school district. Enrollment is up. We have new buildings that are healthy and safe. I'm a former teacher in the school district, elementary music teacher, and I used to be a high school swim coach. And since then, I've volunteered many hundreds, thousands probably, of hours, whether it's in the pool or as a PTA, volunteer president, vice president, many different hats I wore as a volunteer throughout the school district. I am married. I have three daughters that have all gone to the Duluth Public Schools or are still in the Duluth Public Schools. And I am really thrilled to see what is happening, that stability has happened finally in our district. So thank you for coming tonight. Thank you to the League for sponsoring this.
Hello. I'm John Donahue, running for 3rd District School Board. Resident of Duluth lifelong, have great wife Lisa, three kids. Alyssa currently at Denfeld, Jacob currently at Morgan Park, and Tyler currently at Piedmont Elementary. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum, and I'd like to thank PAC TV for putting this for broadcast on TV. I'm running today because I want to restore the voice of the people of the 3rd District that was taken away from us four years ago when Tim Grover went against his campaign promises and did a 180 and did just the opposite of what he told us constituents he was gonna do. I have grave concerns. We have stability with the schools, but the payment method of how we're gonna pay for this in the long term has me frightened for the future of my children. Twenty years from now, when they're graduated, will they be able to afford to stay in Duluth with $350 million in retiree healthcare liabilities and over $500 million in red plan liabilities? Things I say tonight might not be politically correct, but that's not me. I just say things how I feel, and I'm looking forward to the next hour, hour and a half, and thank you for coming tonight.
My name is -- my name is Bill Westholm. I'm also running for the 3rd District seat. And I guess a little bit about me. I spent 30 years as an employee of the Duluth School System, as a teacher, and a coach, and a principal at Central and Denfeld, and director of school operations. So I -- my roots run deep here because I'm a lifelong resident also, and I went through the Duluth Schools, my wife, all our kids. Now, our fifth generation is starting the Duluth School System. And he started at Lester Park. So I think I have the time, the interest, and the experience to become a good board member. So, thank you. Thanks to the League too for setting this up.
Hi. My name is Ryan Stauber, running for school board at large. I would also like to voice my appreciation for you all for coming out tonight, the League of Women Voters, PAC TV, and those viewers who are watching this at home. I was born and raised in Duluth. I graduated from Duluth East in 2002, and I had enough credits from advanced placement classes and CIST classes to graduate UMD in three years. I currently work for St. Louis County 911. I've been there for about four years. Before that, I lived in Hollywood for a couple of years. I worked as a screenwriter and copywriter for the film industry. While out there, I worked at the D.D. Hirsch -- or I volunteered at the D.D. Hirsch Suicide Prevention Center, Mental Health Center, serving the greater western United States in their time of need. A little bit more about me, a little personal. I play guitar. I'm an accomplished musician, and I'm an active runner. I finished Grandma's Marathon once, and I did the Ragnar relay twice this year -- or twice in the past, once this year. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on, and thank you for coming out on this beautiful night. Mike Murneke, I taught here. I taught up on 3rd floor when this was actually a school. I grew up in the West End. I still call it the West End. Some people call it Lincoln Park. I went to Lincoln Elementary, Lincoln Junior, and I graduated from Denfeld. I worked at the steel plant. I worked at the blast furnace at the steel plant. They used to hire people to come out and fill in for some of the old timers, and a lot of us had an opportunity to go to work on the steel plant and go to school the next day. And I did that, and I grew up with just a deep appreciation of what the Duluth Public School System did for me. Gave me a chance to go to college, gave me a chance to work here in the school district for 36 years. And I want to pay that back by being a member of the school board and continuing the excellent education we provide.
Okay. Thank you all. During our next portion of the forum, the candidates will respond to questions. The questions that we will be asking this evening were not given to any candidate in advance, so they're hearing them for the first time. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond, and we will begin again with Lauren Martel. And the first question is, do you support the operating levy referendum that will be on the ballot? And if so, at what level? If not, why not?
I hope for all three levels, because the district is currently in a pretty serious fiscal mess. But I'm not sure that the people of the city are gonna be able to and are willing to give the district and the school board any money at this time. I think that we have to be honest about the situation. I do think that's the best public policy. There are more -- there's more than just the non-voter-approved levy involved here. Or the voter-approved levy, I should say. There is the non-voter-approved levy involved as well. The levy burden on the citizens of the city is quite high, and I don't say that to discourage anyone from voting for the levy. But I do think it's very important for the people to understand the situation, and when people ask me, "What should I do about the levy?" And I hear that question quite often. I tell them, "I want you to vote for it. I hope you do, but don't put yourselves in a situation that you can't afford. You have to look at this individually." And I don't blame you if you can't do it. But I do think that the levy is not the panacea. Even if we gave them the top tier, it wouldn't even cover their deficit currently. And I think that we have to be careful about the fact that the people of the city are quite stressed right now. Okay, thank you.
I support all three levels of the levy. When you look at the average household in Duluth, the first level is another $5 per month, and then the second level is about $7.50, and then the third level is $9.50. And I heard someone mention just the comparison of filling a gas tank for a year, I mean, one time, would cover the whole levy. And I thought that was a really good comparison. But I don't know if all of you noticed. I think all of you did, because you're very aware, but the state had to shut down this past summer. And what happened with that, it was almost three weeks long, and how they ended up balancing it, part of it was through shifting for schools. And so it was about $700 million that went into the future that we don't receive as a school district. And so the school district is being forced to borrow money that they are mandated to provide services for. So we have testing, we have special ed services that are all mandated, many other mandates, and yet the state is not paying what is in the Constitution. So we, as a community, need to step up and provide that funding, since it appears the state is probably not gonna be coming with that money very soon. It is right now about $30 million that the state owes the Duluth Public Schools, and every other district in the state that's over $3 billion. Thank you.
I'm John Donahue, 3rd District. I'm open to voting on this. I just find it ironic they wouldn't let us vote on the red plan, but they'll let us vote on raising our taxes. Because I'm just gonna vote on the lowest level to fit my budget. What we have going on here, we have -- the school board will be probably coming after us with a 10% increase just on their tax levy for this upcoming year. So then we have our homestead tax credit being taken away, which on average is around $300. So that, you know, take around $28, $26 a month on that. St. Louis County's gonna go after 5%, City of Duluth anywhere from 5% to 7%. Then the City of Duluth is gonna be coming after us for libraries and parks. You add it all together, and now maybe I can come up with the money. Maybe I can't. I think I can. So it's just where do you draw the line? And I've said this before, you have seniors on fixed incomes. They're losing their homestead tax credits. You have working families. I meet these people every day. They work two or three jobs. We're gonna tax them out of the home? So we're gonna put people on the streets in the name of the kids? I wanna do right by our kids, but it's like, at what point do we draw the line? And these are the issues that we're facing coming up here. And I wish I could look through rose-colored glasses like some members here, but I just can't. I have to be a realist, and that's why I'm gonna go with the lowest amount to fit my budget. Thank you.
I am unquestionably in support of all three levels of the levy. And the basic reason is, is that's the position the state has put us in because of how they funded over the past several years. Our basic foundation aid, which is the main amount of money we get per student, is, this past three years, has been $5,128 per student. It has not changed. It's been flat. Now, the state has said, "Well, we'll give you an increase." So next year, it's going up 0.0097%, $50. The year after that, $50. And that isn't enough, folks, to get us where we need to get in this district. So we're kinda hurting for this. Now, in terms of an operating levy, our district is low. Right now, I think it's $536 or $38 per student is our operating levy. The average in the state is $938. So we need -- I don't know that we're asking too much. Yeah, we don't wanna raise taxes on people, but on the other hand, I'm a taxpayer too. On the other hand, we need these just to do the things that we really want to do and also the things we need to do in this district, whether you're talking about class size or whatever it might be. Because right now, state funding has been very, very flat. Thank you.
I have taken no public stance on any level of the operating levy. I believe that that choice should be down to the voters on Election Day. It's a choice between them and their ballot, how much they can afford, whether they want to give all to the schools, or part to the schools and part to the city, or none to the schools. It's every individual's personal choice, and therefore encourage everyone to get informed and learn, you know, where your money's going. I will say that if I was on the board and we were asking the public for a levy, I would support it. Being a member of a board and knowing the budgets full well, I would support a levy if it should come to that in the future. Thank you.
The great thing about a levy is it puts the decision in the hands of the voters, and I support that. I will be voting for all three levels of the levy. I think it's needed. I have firsthand knowledge of our budget, and I know that we have flatlined for a long time while our fuel costs and our food costs and other costs have gone up. I also believe we're going to see a turnaround. I do believe that some of the cost-cutting measures that have been put in place because of having two schools, two high schools, for example, will start paying dividends. I know we're gonna have some energy savings coming down the line. I know we're gonna have some transportation savings. I just heard today that Duluth is considered, and I know some of you will be shocked by this, but Duluth is considered a growing community, that they think that economically Duluth is going to be a place where people wanna move. And when they come in and see our new schools, I think we're gonna see more people moving in, building houses, paying taxes, and this is all gonna help us with our funding.
Thank you. Our next question is, "Citizens are always hearing about the achievement gap. What is your perception of the achievement gap? And in your opinion, is the school district doing enough to reduce or eliminate that gap? If not, what are your suggestions?" Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond to this question, and we'll begin with Judy Saliga-Punko.
Thank you. We do have an achievement gap in the Duluth School District, and what measures have been put in place to help that, like our integration specialists this last year, I think that has been a really significant proactive way to try to work with the families, with the students, and pull together. I think a big difference for kids is their family situation quite often. It's the socioeconomic factors that cause a lot of this, and so by bringing the parents, the families together with the kids, and having mentors, and how to navigate some of the system has really helped. Some of the other things that we've done, just all-day kindergarten, all-day, everyday kindergarten, I'm really excited about that. Ever since I was at a, it was a Rotary Chamber thing about five years ago, and Art Raulnick from the Federal Reserve Bank spoke and talked about early childhood education and what a difference that makes to children in giving them a good head start. So by the time they start school, they are ready, and they are already caught up instead of starting behind. So by investing in early childhood, which something that we have done is all-day, everyday kindergarten, and we are seeing benefits of that the second year that we've done it. And I'm very excited to see some of the progress in that. So different things that the district has put in place really make a difference. Thank you.
Yes, we do have an achievement gap, and it knows no race, no color, from white to black to Native American to Asian. I mean, it's a problem I think most districts have in this country. And the thing is, we do have ECFE. My wife and I partook in it, all-day kindergarten, we partook. One thing we can do is ask for more volunteerism of people who might be stay-at-home mothers and fathers, people who are laid off, and try to make it inclusive, to get them to be a mentor during the day, to help the kids read, to help them study. The best part of it is, there's no cost to it. You look at situations, it's unfortunate, but we have many transient children that come from different parts of the area. They're here three months, my kids tell me about they make a new friend, all of a sudden they're gone, all to nowhere, they're gone. And I don't know if that's on the books as far as, you know, another statistic, but it's really sad, and how you come across that, I don't know. You can't make the parents stay and take the kids with. But I think overall that the district has done well with programs they've implemented. But there again, we have the gap, and the best thing you can do is read to your children at night and be proactive as a parent, and maybe get involved as a, by volunteering in the schools. Thank you.
I apologize. I hope I didn't make too much noise. I forgot to turn this thing off last time, but I'll do it next time. You two can remind me.
You're forgiven.
Thank you. I'm fairly familiar with the achievement gap. Obviously, I was a high school principal for a long time, and my wife worked in early childhood. And so what we're really looking at is not just even a K-12 situation, it's actually an E-12 from early childhood on up. And that's been mentioned a little bit here about the importance of early childhood education. We're starting to see kids when they're four years old, and we need to, because we do have a lot of kids coming in without the skills they maybe need to be successful, and so it's up to us to get them started and get them started and help bring them up to speed. So it's really an individual thing though, because yes, we have school scores, but what it comes down to is each individual has a score, and our schools have to take the time through various programs to really address each individual and where they may be low and where they may be high, and what types of things each individual kid needs. We had a student, or we had a son who was in special education because he, we didn't know it, he had a hearing problem, and he had a speech impediment. And so we became familiar with the special education program, and it's a wonderful program. Can't believe what we used to do with those kids 30, 40 years ago. You know, we kinda threw them away, but not anymore. So whether it's special education or just kids with any needs, or kids that come in with socioeconomic needs, we need to help. That's it. Thank you.
This quote is attributed to Einstein, but I couldn't find a direct source, but I'm gonna say it's his anyway. Everyone is a genius, but if you judge a fish by its ability to climb a tree, it's gonna spend its life thinking it's pretty stupid. Essentially, we need to have lower class sizes when it comes to the very young children, and we need to learn how kids learn, how they are best served by our district. And there are kids who learn very differently. There's kids who learn orally, there's kids who learn visually, and there's kids who learn by hands-on doing things, and those kids can learn from each other, or they could learn better in groups. When it comes to narrowing that achievement gap, it's teaching one-on-one. It's knowing exactly how those kids learn and how to best serve them, so that we can sort out who's gonna be a fish in the sea and who's gonna be the tree climber, and make sure that they are both successful in life.
I grew up in a diverse neighborhood, and when I went to school, there were people from one part of the area that had some money, and there were people who had no money. And even back then, we would see kids come in who could read, write, and count in kindergarten, and those who couldn't. One of the problems we have in America today, not just Duluth and not Minnesota, but in America, is we have young, three- and four-year-old kids who do not have all the opportunities, the books, the coloring books, the stimulus that they need, the going to the zoo, going to plays, and it's gonna be tough to provide that. ECFE, a good friend of mine has worked in ECFE for a long time, is a great start. It really helps these kids come in and get on a level playing field. So I'm gonna do all I can to work with the parents and the children and our teachers to get the kids all up to speed by the time they hit kindergarten.
Well, there's been a lot of terrific observations, and I think the district has made a lot of progress in this area. Haven't solved it, obviously. I am above verification. You know, I haven't really seen the stats on this yet, you know, whether or not the graduation rates have gone up or truancy has gone down from the integration specialists, whether or not we're really getting the bang for the buck we need out of that. But I think it's a good starting point. Obviously, there's only so much that the district can do, any education system can do. Some of it has to come from within the community. We have to somehow reach out to the community, the people that actually know these kids. And we've gotta tap into those resources and have them help. If they know there's a troubled kid that isn't getting to school, they've gotta help too. I don't believe that the district alone can solve this problem, but I think the district's trying pretty hard, and I don't think it is just a race problem, as one of the other candidates mentioned. I do think it's also related to poverty, and I think there is somewhat of a gap throughout the district in terms of income equity as well, and exactly what resources they have.
Thank you. You're doing a good job policing each other on the microphones. There will be one minute to respond to the next question. The next question is, "If you were writing a job description for a school board member, what would you include?" And we will begin with John Donahue.
What would you include? I think a moral compass, to be able to take a look at any particular issue, looking at what's in it for the administration and special interests, and what's in it for the children and the taxpayers. I think just being able to do what is right and not being tugged in one direction or the other. I guess a conflict I have is, do we really want two retired administrators and a former teacher on the school board? I guess because what do we get off it? And I'm not saying the shaft, but I just don't know if we'll get a true answer. I think we need people on there who are concerned citizens, like a few of us up here, who just wanna do right by the kids and the taxpayers. And I think by having a good moral compass and knowing right from wrong, and what's best for the kids and the taxpayers is what you need. Thank you.
Well, what I will bring is, I do have a lot of experience in the classroom, so I have seen it all, the good, the bad, and the ugly, and everything else in between. And with that comes some tempering of my thinking, my analysis, just because of the things I have been through. So I think I bring a perspective to this position or to this board that can be really valuable, because I have worked through the community for many, many years. While I was, obviously, when you're a principal, you're working a lot with the community. So I've got a broad perspective, and I think that could be really valuable for me as a board member.
The main qualification should just be a representative of the people, and I think that's generally what it is and has been. The ability to take input from the community at large, digest it, and come to a logical, sound conclusion, and make educated choices and decisions based on that information. There's plenty of times in my personal life where we've had to, or in my work experience where you've had, I've had to do things like this. And for me, it comes down to life or death, plenty of times at 911. But that's what you need to be, is you need to be able to take all the information given to you, digest it, and put it into a safe spot where you can act upon it.
I'm very secure with my moral compass. I'm very secure with my moral compass. I grew up in Duluth and I love Duluth. I love what the Duluth Public Schools have given me and I'm hoping to give back. What I bring by having worked in the school system is experience with budgets, experience working on curriculum committees. I have experienced, I know buildings from Stowe to Lakeside. I've been around the block, I know the buildings, I can walk into Denfeld, I can walk into Stowe, I can walk into Lakeside and I'll know people and I can listen to them. My moral compass is very strong and I'm hoping to serve the people of Duluth.
Well, let me acknowledge the educational credentials of some of the people at this table. But we're not hiring a teacher or a principal, we are hiring a representative of the people. And that's an entirely different job description. And I do believe that this board has forgotten that sometimes. And I think it's very, very important for them to remember that. Again, it's one thing I will bring to the table here, is to reach out to the community. I believe there's a large part of this community that feels disenfranchised from the school board and I will do everything I can to reach out to them and restore the trust. Thank you.
You know, one of the hardest things that I have had as part of the school board is making financial decisions and balancing budgets. When you see a listing of people that you know that you've either taught with or you know them personally because you volunteered in the schools, that's really tough. And when you are on a school board, you are chosen to make very tough decisions and that is leadership. But I think also that school board members should be able to respond to phone calls, emails, that they should make sure they know state finance, which is incredibly complicated. There's the whole budgetary thing, reading over the information. We get so much information to look at and we are expected to make thoughtful, good decisions by looking at that, all of those numbers. One thing I do besides all of that is I attend events. And I did that even before I had children, but I love to go to games and music events. So I think that's a good school board member. Thank you.
Thank you. There will also be one minute for each of you to respond to the next question. And the next question is, sometimes people don't agree with each other. How do you handle situations where you disagree with others? And we will begin with Bill Westholm.
Well, I think the main thing is, you have to be open and honest and you can't hide things and let them fester. And so in my experience, whether it's in the school or other jobs I've been in, something comes up, you need to address it. And again, you just can't let it sit there, because what you end up then is misunderstanding a problem being three or four or five times what it should have been. So I think communication is the absolute essential part of dealing with any problems you have, whether it's in a school or probably in a school board and when you're dealing with the community or individuals or staff or anything else. Thank you.
Where I work, obviously, there's a lot of disagreement. We get some pretty passionate people who call in with a problem. We have to diffuse it very quickly. You know, we get about four seconds to answer the phone, fifteen seconds to figure out where they are, twenty seconds to figure out the problem, and by sixty seconds, help better be on the way and you better know pretty much the details of the situation. That's what I do best. I listen and I'm able to diffuse people who are very angry by listening, validating their concerns. And part of validating their concerns is understanding, understanding where they're coming from, that they have valid points, that they are angry for a reason or that they are ecstatic for a reason. And once you can understand that and validate those concerns, typically you can have a civil conversation.
I've had a lot of experience dealing with emotional issues, controversial issues. And the best way to work through that is to listen to the other side, listen to their valid points, reinforce their valid points. I see why you believe this or why you believe that. And not to get confrontational, that's the most important thing. There has to be an avenue for citizens to approach you and I'm gonna do that through my telephone. My home phone is gonna be open to anybody. And through emails and through personal visits, I am also going to respond. I'm going to try to respond to every, I'm going to respond to everybody who has a question for me and I think they'll feel better about that and so will I.
Well, I agree. Probably the most important thing is to keep all avenues open and that's what I'll do if I'm on the board. And I will reach out to my constituents. Again, when I'm going door-to-door, I just feel, I find so many people that don't feel they've been heard, they feel the door's been shut on them. And that just builds up resentment in the community. And I just feel that we need to, as a board, to reach out again, open up those avenues of communication, let more opinions back in here, into this room. Many people don't even bother to come here anymore because they just don't feel they're gonna be heard. And I think it's time for us to have a new attitude as a board towards this community. That's the best way to stop confrontation, I believe.
One of the things that I learned when I was a coach, at the high school level in particular, is you can't make everyone happy. And you have to go with decisions that are the best, whether it's for the team or the best for the school district. And you will never be able to make everyone happy, but if a lot of thought has been put into it and you explain, I mean, there's things that have happened in the school district that I haven't always agreed, but when we receive information and you realize that is the best decision, that's just part of what it is. You cannot make everyone happy. It's just, and if you try to, you end up having everyone else mad at you too. So it really, it is not possible to do that, but I think people really understand that if you make a good decision, you've listened to all sides and move on, then instead of holding, you know, where someone you disagree with and they hold a grudge. I think we've had to learn to just move on and go on to the next idea. Thank you.
I just think we had a classic example about getting along with people. Eight minutes ago, when I made a comment about moral compasses and Mr. Murnicki, good old Murn, was staring at me and, you know, I mean, yeah, you're staring at me with your little boar stare there, like taking offense to what I'm saying about moral compasses and, oh, you are, let's not deny it. Okay, you can, but it was childish.
Please address the question, you have a timeline.
So what I'm saying is, it's perfectly, it's perfectly okay to agree to disagree. And like I say, you're not always gonna agree, but at least people will know where I stand. I take an issue and I don't drift away from it. No, if I'm out there and I'm talking to people and they might be, and the majority's saying, you might be wrong there, I'm gonna listen to them and I might switch my ideas, but it's gonna be the majority telling me to change my mind, not just one or two people. So it's okay to agree to disagree. I don't see a problem with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there will be one and a half minutes to address the next question. Given the current shortage of funding available in the Duluth School District, what are your spending priorities? And we will begin with Ryan Staber.
The funding priorities that I would list would probably start with making sure that our arts and music programs are fully funded, our special education programs are restored to their previous funding levels. And beyond that, I would like to see an increase in technology investment. We could replace our costly textbooks that get outdated very quickly with half the cost, eBooks that are interactive, that children can use and learn. We can save on costs of copies and shredding and our own garbage simply by being more environmentally safe. We can modernize our curriculum and teach kids things that they'll actually need to use in life. I took five years of French when I moved out to Los Angeles. I lived in a portion of Los Angeles where you either spoke Korean or you spoke Spanish or you got that portion of English that people kind of half-understood. We could teach, we could get rid of our post-World War II curriculum and move along to a world curriculum where we teach languages such as Mandarin Chinese or Arabic. Thank you.
I think we are gonna see some funding changes coming up in energy efficiency in some of our buildings now. If you would have seen some of the old buildings I've been in, one of the buildings that we had up on third floor, the southern side, it was probably ninety-seven degrees in the building, sun was coming through. And then on the north side, it was just the opposite, kids were wearing coats. We had very, very old heating systems. We are gonna save money on energy efficiency. We are gonna save money by having one less principal, one less activities director, one less football coach, and one less orchestra director by having two high schools. There's gonna be some other savings too in transportation. One of the, I have some ideas in that and one of the first things I hope to do is go down to the transportation building and meet with Bill Paulson and the staff down there and share some ideas and see if we can come up with some ideas for savings that way. I also believe that we're going to have increased enrollment and with increased enrollment, we will have increased funding.
Well, these operational savings are less than definite at this point. So let's wait and see what we get there. I think a lot of these savings, energy savings, are unlikely to come true as definitively as they say they're going to. But the problem, of course, the loss of state aid, and it's not a reduction of state, it's a loss of state aid, it's tied to student enrollment loss. We lost seventeen hundred seventy-nine students in the last six years. That's the main reason we've lost state aid and we have to try to get the students back. Any money we get, it's clear what we have to do, we have to marshal it to get the class sizes down. I mean, that's the biggest problem we have in the schools right now, I hear it over and over again as I go door-to-door. That's what people's biggest concern is. We've got these big shiny new buildings, but we've got classes over fifty in some of the schools. So obviously, that's the main thing that I'm gonna go after and somehow marshal whatever money we can put together to bring back more teachers and get those class sizes down. Any cuts I make will be to teachers last, I can tell you that.
You know, the school district has, in the past month, added over fifteen FTEs, which is teacher equivalents, sometimes it's a point two here, but over fifteen, which is really exciting. We have gone through declining enrollment, actually probably for the last twenty-five or thirty years. And it's been an average, probably in the last ten years, of three hundred kids. I mean, if you notice, Duluth has lost population too and people don't have as many kids as they used to. So it's just kind of been declining all the way across the state. But one of the neat things this year that happened is kids came back, it was the stability. And so that has helped us add some staff. As far as funding priorities, what's really been hard for me on the board is the last four years, we've had to cut over twenty-four million just because of extra costs and declining enrollment. But the good news is, we are adding because of that stability. I would like to see us bring back some more electives at the high school, maintain our middle school programming. I love that we added the sixth grade music piece, so the sixth graders alternate band, orchestra, or choir, they have their choice, with Viets every other day. It's very healthy and they all get music and I'm excited about that. I would like to have more specialists in the elementary schools, the art, music, Viets and library. That was a cut, we still have them, but it's a little bit less than what we used to. So I would love to be able to bring back some of those, but those are my priorities. It is hard, but I'm really, I see positive things happening because of all of this. Thank you.
John Donahue, third district. To me, my number one priority is special education. This year at Morgan Park, there's a thirty percent of all incoming sixth graders have special needs. We cannot afford to let one of those kids slip through the cracks, I have a vested interest in that. My son has a processing learning disability and it's imperative that not only him, but all those thirty percent of those children have every chance to succeed. And in that way, by putting our resources into that, we can close that achievement gap, we cannot let those kids slip through the cracks. You'd like to find ways to save money and you have to look at every available resource and every way of doing it. But as much as I'd like to have a laser-sharp focus on arts and music, someday, it's like it'd be nice to have that fully funded. But at this point, and some people disagree, but you have to, you have to work on reading, writing, and arithmetic, the core of learning. And we don't just wanna meet state standards with these children, we want to exceed them. And then by that way, as we show the surrounding communities that we were worth our weight in salt, I mean, we can get people to come back. We hear about kids coming back, but everybody that I know up in Piedmont, a lot of these kids are still at Proctor, they're still at Herman Town, and I just, I'm waiting for them to come back. And then I'll believe that they're actually coming back. A lot of them, I think, were kindergartners coming into the school district, but time will tell.
I think we've made tremendous progress, obviously, on the capital side and boy, was it badly needed. I mean, the average age of our buildings was over fifty years old. When I was the director of school operations, I made it a point to visit every one of our buildings five or six years ago. And I was astounded at what I saw. There were some buildings that should have been closed ten or fifteen years ago. So there's no doubt in my mind that we've made tremendous progress, needed progress with our buildings. So now the next step is teaching and learning. It's almost a cliche, but that's what we now can focus on. And so when you talk about teaching and learning, you know, then you're talking about things like class size and adding staff and adding teaching staff and adding support staff, because there are many more staff besides teachers in a building. When I was the principal at Denfeld my last couple of years, I had a hundred and thirty staff. About forty of them were classroom teachers. The rest were support staff of one kind or another and they were all important, they weren't extras, they weren't fat. So I think again, we can start to focus now on teaching and learning because we have made some progress in this district on some of the things we needed to make progress in.
Thank you. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond to the next question. And the question is, how do you feel the Duluth Public Schools can help draw young families to Duluth? And we'll begin with Mike Murnicki.
I was the go-to person when I get a call from the school board saying that so-and-so is coming to town and would like a tour of the school. Oftentimes, they were making up their mind between the Duluth school system, Herman Town, or Two Harbors or others. And I would take them through the building and we had a computer lab up on third floor that had wooden tables with the electric cords coming down from the ceiling. And by the fifth hour, the building was very warm because there was not proper ventilation or anything. I would take them through, show them the school and they would go on and look at other schools and some of them did come to Duluth and some didn't. If you go to Denfeld, I went to the Denfeld Open House and the Duluth East Open House along with the others. And if I were showing somebody the schools today, if I were showing somebody who's coming up from Rochester, in fact, I met a neurosurgeon who came up from Memphis and we were talking about this very thing. If you show them the schools now with the modern computer programs, the media, the computer labs, the media centers are just dropped, it's phenomenal. The smart boards are in place, it's really a modern 21st century education going into the 22nd. We're gonna do very well, we're going to attract a lot of people. When they're moving into town, they're gonna stay here to stay in our school system.
Well, clearly, the schools are gonna be impressive, the buildings are gonna be impressive. And I tell people all the time, you know, if I built you a mansion and put you in it, you'd love that mansion too for a while, till you start realizing that the financing package isn't quite what you thought. I mean, that's the problem that we have here. Now, we're out on a long limb financially here, a tenuous limb, I would say. My opponent was talking about balancing budgets, they didn't balance a budget in the last six years. Since Mr. Dixon walked into this town, they haven't balanced the budget. Had a net loss, accumulative life loss of nineteen point three million in the previous five years. I mean, that's not balancing budgets. And we, what I'm afraid of is that we're not gonna be able to staff these schools in such a way to attract people. The schools themselves will be impressive, but we gotta have what people really want inside these schools. And the most important thing is the student-teacher ratio. People are very concerned about that. I hear it all the time from the people that live I hear it all the time from the people that live here, and that's going to be a problem for people coming here as well, if we don't get it under control. And it really is going to come down to money and managing money. And I believe that we have some serious problems that need some real leadership on it, not just saying you're balancing budgets, when in fact you haven't balanced a single budget in six years.
Over the past twenty years, the district has gone through some turbulent times. A lot of elementary schools were threatened with closure. In fact, I felt really bad for the Chester Park community, because I think it was five years in a row they were going to be closed, and then they weren't going to be, and it was really hard for families to know what was going to happen. What we're seeing right now is stability, everyone knows where their children are going to go to school for probably the next thirty to forty years. It's really neat to see, and I believe that that is going to be drawing families, I'm already seeing it, I've heard from real estate agents and people that work at our hospitals. It is huge for this community, because we have created stability, we have new schools. It's not just that, but we have the programming support to provide great learning. You know, when you read about our new science labs, what a difference from what we had at our high schools. I mean, I hope you get a chance to see it if you haven't, but it's amazing how we are now supporting learning, instead of just trying to figure out what we can offer based on what our buildings are like, or what's in a classroom. So that is a huge draw to families, they do look for schools, they look for a job, and then they look, what is the school like? And I do know that we have lost families to Rochester or other areas of the country or state because of what our schools look like. So it's really exciting to see the change in this community, I do feel the stability. Thank you.
The question is, how do we attract students to our district? Well, it's a double-edged sword, because of course we have the schools, that's an inducement in and of itself, but it's through action, not words, through test results, test scores, color what you may. But the thing is, if anybody wants to move to Duluth, I'll go back to it, you have to look at the debt load that the city is carrying, and right now, we're approaching a billion dollars in unfunded, or pretty much unfunded liabilities. So if you're looking at moving into Duluth, do you really want to move into a town, or do you want to choose a town like Proctor, Herman Town, Superior, they have high taxes? So you'd really have to look at the big picture, we only can focus on, you really focus on what's going on in the school, we say, but you have to look at the big picture, and if I was having kids that were going to stay in this area, I'm trying to be optimistic, but ten years from now, I'd probably say, kids, get a house in Proctor. You know, we're digging ourselves a hole deeper and deeper, and the thing that I just have to come to grips with is that the only way we're going to attract students is through test scores and teach them the basics and thriving on those basics. And at times, if the district can't afford a certain program, a certain sport, it's okay to tell kids, no, we can't afford it, we do it at home, I do it at home anyways. Sometimes kids just have to be told, no, we can't afford something, and I think it's a lesson to be learned by all. So I think the schools will attract students on their own, but we're carrying a heck of a debt load here, and we've got to start spending down. Thank you.
I think the way we attract students is through, and it's been hinted at here, predictability and stability, and that's where we're headed, and I think with the new buildings, that really helps, because we were losing students. All those, we have many neighbors up in the Piedmont area who were fleeing to Proctor, who were going to Herman Town, that's because they didn't know what was going to happen. Are we going to have a school, are we not going to have a school? If we have a school, what kind of school are we going to have? So now, we've got some stability and predictability, and we also have to do a good job of selling our schools. We're a large district, and there are some advantages to that, because we can offer some things that smaller districts cannot, and larger schools can offer some things that smaller schools cannot offer. So we have to take advantage of that. I mean, when I was at Denfeld the last year there, we really focused on, and I know East and Central did the same thing, on getting clubs, just outside of the football team and the hockey team and the speech team, and so we had sixty clubs, including one called the Disco Preservation Society, and that one just had kids, a bunch of kids who liked to study old movies. Well, they had it, it was an educational thing, actually, that they had. So I think we can sell our bigness in a way and offer some things that smaller districts and schools cannot.
If you want to attract students, you have to attract the parents, and if you want to attract the parents, you've got to have jobs. And right now, that's something that we do not have in Duluth, or really in St. Louis County. And that's a challenge for all of us, that's a challenge not only for the school board, but our county commissioners and our city councils. And I say we work with our mayor to reach our population goal of ninety thousand, add four thousand people here in the coming years. When it comes to the things that we can do as a school board, we can retain our quality teachers, we can exceed our testing standards and show that, hey, we do really offer great programs and great opportunities to kids, look at what we've produced. But one of the big things is, I bought a house this year, and on that list of things that you look for in a house is how much you have to pay in property taxes, and it was quite a large difference between here and Proctor. And for a long time, that was my go-to excuse why I was looking in Proctor. We need to eliminate this huge debt burden that we put on our citizens in ISD 709.
Okay, thank you. The next question, I'm going to cut down to one minute to respond, just so we can get some of the audience questions in as well. The question is, as we know, obesity is a huge problem among our youth. As a school board member, what would you do to make sure the children in the Duluth Public Schools have access to healthy nutritious food and beverages? And we will start with Lauren Martel.
Well, I'll admit right off that I don't know what the current status of the schools is in this regard, but obviously, everything comes down to finances, and healthy foods are probably more expensive, and I'm hoping that we, you know, obviously, I hope we can get the healthiest foods into the schools as we can, I mean, that's just common sense. As far as how else you can address this problem, you know, I don't know. I mean, I don't know how many problems the school district can address in some ways. I mean, obviously, we're going to address this in every way we can, it's a problem that is becoming epidemic among the youth, and we have to try to address it, and any way we can get healthier foods into the schools, I would support it.
It is healthy food, and one thing I'm really excited about in our new schools and renovated schools is we have put kitchen equipment that where things can be made right on site, instead of the old make it at one school and ship it over and heat it up, and it's, you know, the fry, all of that. So those things have been taken care of in our new schools and our renovated additions. So we have this great kitchen equipment, which I'm already seeing a lot of fresh vegetables when I've been in the schools, it's really neat to see. The other thing is the physical education, it's not just the eating, and I had mentioned to you about the sixth grade, what we had added, well, actually, not so much added, they had fayette every day, every day for one semester, and then not the other day, but now it's every other day, so they are always getting at least a few times of physical education per week, and I think that makes a big difference for kids, because there is an obesity problem, and schools can't address all of it, but we have gone a long way to making sure we've taken care of some of it. Thank you.
John Donahue, third district. My youngest child, Tyler, he's nine years old, he asked me, Dad, if you get on the school board, can you do something about the lunch menu? And I said, well, you know, I'll see what I can do there, kid, and look into it. I mean, really, it's garbage, it's not very good. My kids, you know, I pay for it, you know, and now we're at a point where we look at the menu, and if they don't like something, we just give them a lunch to bring there, but unfortunately, I mean, is it really the school's part to be a parent? I mean, how much can we do? In the morning, I give my kids a multivitamin, I give them orange juice, you know, at lunchtime, I mean, I give them a hot lunch at school. One thing we can do is quit calling collection agencies when parents get behind on the bill, there's other ways to settle it. But the thing we have to, I mean, at night, I feed my kids a balanced meal? How much can the school district really do? It's unfortunate we have this problem, but more fayette, more outdoor activities, that's great, but, you know, it's just one of those catch-52s, it's about parenting, not schooling. Thank you.
We have our students in our possession for half of their waking hours every day, and so we have somewhat of an obligation, I think, to provide them while we can or what we can in terms of nutritious food. And I was visiting, I think it was Lakeville a few years ago, and they had an expansive food program, and we actually stayed for their lunch, and they had four different lunch lines, and the food was excellent, different variety of things, and the kids did not go out, they stayed in. And so I think we need to keep working, maybe we need to visit some other districts and see what we can do to make our programs more attractive. I know we're limited by money, and that, some better programs may cost money, but I think we at least need to look at it and see if there's some other things we can do to improve our options for kids as far as food is concerned.
Obviously, promoting diet and exercise is the biggest objective, the biggest priority. As you heard others say, providing a variety of healthy options for lunch and for those who come for breakfast, strong physical education program, and we could also have more active learning. I mean, in high school, you sit at a desk for fifty to fifty-five minutes, you just sit there and you listen. You know, it's not often that the kids get up and do something else, move your body. You know, we should see if there's anything that we can do to allow teachers to have their kids move a little bit more.
We removed the pop machines and the canyon machines, and I think that was a help. There are things the schools can do. I do think that health education can start earlier, we can start talking about the food pyramid and healthy food choices down the line, and still, parents are parents, and some rely on fast foods and some don't, but we can at least give some information out. We can continue our physical education program. It'd be nice if people didn't burn our playgrounds down, but we have some very nice playgrounds now around the city, and I see the kids out playing when I'm up at Homecroft, you see all the kids running around playing, and I think we need to encourage more movement. A lot of these kids do not move enough, and we have to try to see if we can do that while they're in our area at that time.
Okay, at this point, we're going to go to questions from the audience, and there will be one minute to answer the next question. The question is, there are schools in other areas that have scored higher on state tests in reading and math. What would you recommend be done to improve state test scores? And we'll start with Judy Saliga-Punkel.
You know, that's always been difficult, because you've heard of No Child Left Behind, and what's really difficult for school districts with that is they have many different subgroups, so it could be maybe one of the subgroups, whether it was special ed or low income or, you know, whatever, there's many different subgroups, but you could even be on the failing list if you don't have the correct attendance. So there have been some changes with that, and I know with our MCA tests, they've changed throughout, and I know one of the good things about No Child Left Behind is they have forced districts to look at each individual child, to give them the tutoring or the extra help that they've needed. So I think that that's going to make a big difference too, but I think what has happened with the whole MCA, No Child Left Behind, is it's really been basically punishment, and I think they're really relooking at that whole thing, you might have read that, about the state of Minnesota's looking at what we do, because we know what we do best. Sorry, thank you.
John Donahue, third district. What we've got to do is lobby the state to get rid of No Child Left Behind, it's a far sound. As far as picking up reading and math scores, volunteerism, once again, we've got to get people out there who want to sit with these kids who are having troubles explaining the qualities of reading, explaining about math and how to solve problems, and, I mean, right now, with money problems that we have, I think we have to reach out to the community more than ever, even if it comes down to begging. And people who are at home, that instead of sitting around watching a soap opera or whatever they watch when they're at home, can come to the school and set up a certain rooms in these schools and take these kids in and nurture them, become a quote-unquote, you know, little friend and a big friend in, you know, some cases. And we need to go out there, we need the volunteer time and teach these kids math and reading, and I think through volunteerism, we can make great strides.
I think I and others have alluded to it, I think one of the key things, again, is to focus on individuals. Yes, we get scores for schools and for subgroups in the schools, but what it comes down to is when we look at individual kids, how are they doing and how are we going to try to help them? And so one of the things that we, I know we did when we got test scores back, we would analyze the curriculum aspects of those tests too. Did our school or did some subgroup score really poorly in this area of math, for example, some area of geometry or algebra? Well, then, we, as a math department, we had to look at it and say, well, you know, we really could do more in this particular area, and hopefully, that brought up some scores, and I think over the years, we saw that it actually did work, to focus on individuals, but also focus on specific curriculum areas to help those scores come up.
Again, one of the things we can do is to lower class sizes, especially at the elementary level. I've been told that currently, the highest class level for an elementary, highest class size for an elementary school is thirty. We could do better, we could get it under twenty-five, how about twenty? Get these teachers learning exactly how each individual child learns, and from that, help expand their intelligence as best as they can learn that. Tests take a temperature of the whole, the district as a whole, or the state as a whole, or the country as a whole, and we shouldn't be using them to micromanage teachers. The teachers know the kids best, let them do what's best for each child, and that includes getting the parents involved, so that the teachers know exactly, or the parents know exactly how the teachers plan on teaching, because this is what they have observed.
We are a very large school district, surrounded by a lot of smaller school districts. We have a diverse population, and some of our kids need some help. We go back to the idea that identification early, ECFE, get the students in smaller classes, get the students feeling good about themselves and feeling good about going to school, and the test scores will go up.
Well, the assessment's always the problem, is, you know, how do you measure it? Do you measure progress of the individual student or limit it to a test? I think there are problems with No Child Left Behind, I think it's probably a good thing that if we get the waiver. If you just measure to the test, you're just teaching to the test, and that has been a problem in the district, I think, and it has been a problem across the country, really. But again, as Mr. Staubert pointed out, it really comes down to the class sizes, I believe, that's the main thing you want to do, is get those class sizes down, and so you can truly treat them as individuals, as Mr. Westholm pointed out, that's the only way you can do it, is to get these class sizes down to a manageable size for the teachers.
Okay, so this is going to be our last question, there will be one minute to respond, and it's kind of a long question, but I'm going to cut to the chase, which is, what can be done to reduce class sizes now? Oh, I'm sorry, John Donahue will begin this round.
What can we do to reduce class sizes right now? Well, really, nothing. What we have to do is chart for the future. I mean, if we could pull teachers out of our hats like it's a magic trick, I think we could do a lot, but we have to live within the realities of what we're playing with here. And if we can come up with an assertion of how many students are going to be coming into the district in the next two, three years, then we can look ahead. But yet, as far as saying, you know, oh, things are going great here and everything, we have to face reality, and the reality is, we have limited resources. We acknowledge that, and we go on from there. It'd be great to get more teachers involved, but at this point, I don't really see how that's going to be feasible. So once again, I'm going to keep hitting on it about volunteerism and making people more active in our communities, and maybe I'm a fool, maybe I have a vision that one person can make a difference, but I really think we can make a difference. Thank you.
Well, the only way we can reduce class sizes right now is get more teachers, and can we afford that? Well, maybe not. We've already added, as Judy mentioned, I think, just six secondary teachers, and also we added some elementary teachers, and that, you know, we're always surprised or not surprised at how many students we aren't expecting that show up those first days, and how many students that we didn't think we were going to lose, we lost. So then you're... to lose, we lost. So then you're, you're trying to figure out how the heck we're going to deal with this. Oh, this school is up 50 kids. We need two more people. This one is down 30 kids. Maybe they're going to lose a teacher. But the basic line is, or the basic point is, if we're going to lower class sizes, we need more teaching staff. Can we get that right now? I don't know. Maybe not.
On the first day of school, I had a teacher who told me she had 58 kids in her class along with 58 desks, to the point where she couldn't actually get to the side walls to put up posters. Obviously, that's been reduced now with the addition of some of these new full-time employees, the teachers that we've hired back. But if you really wanted to get desperate down to the nitty-gritty in how we could reduce class size right now, reduce operational costs. If we made basic switches to just the way we operate the building, we could probably provide enough for at least one full-time teacher for each high school. I'd be bare bones and it'd be rough to get through and these cuts would be very minute. We do things like change our computer operating software, but you could do it. But like everyone's going to say here, it's not something we can really do right now. This is something we have to plan for, for the future.
We have to attract more students into our system. We have to have the state fulfill its obligation. Even the federal government fulfill their promises for funding. And a lot of the federal mandates, we were promised funding and we're not given that funding. I think with some more students, I think it's going to shake down and we could hopefully reduce class sizes.
Well, again, it comes down to teachers, as it's been pointed out here. And we lost 12 non-10-year teachers in May, another 23 10-year teachers in June. And I believe there's about 35 retiree positions not filled. And my opponent said that, you know, there were 15 teachers brought back, but the actual number of full-time equivalency was 10.4. There were some administrative staff included in that. How do we bring the teachers back when we don't have money? I mean, it's going to be hard. I think we will have to look around at anything we can cut. We have our own private lobbyists in, right now, the district does. You know, is that justified? I mean, we'll look at some other things. There are probably some things we can cut to, to direct that money back towards teachers. But for me, that's a very high priority. We have to bring these class sizes down.
One of the neat things about the influx of new kids is we were able to add quite a few teachers, which did help bring class sizes down. And I am, it is hard to have big classes. Having been a teacher, it, it makes it a lot more difficult. We do need to pass a levy. You know, levies used to be access for access things. I remember when we added the art music and fayed and library specialist in elementary schools many years ago, that was access. So they could be an hour a week instead of a half hour a week. Levies are not access anymore. The state has forced this. And, and I know one candidate mentioned about the mandates for state and federal. And that is huge. The federal government is supposed to provide, this is just one thing, they're supposed to provide 40% of special ed funding. And they only provide not even half of that. So that money is not available for that and it comes out of the general fund. That's one area. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. That concludes our round of questions. And if we didn't get to your question, and I, I know there's a number here that I didn't get to, we encourage you to address your question to candidates directly or to stay afterwards and, and talk to them. At this time, we are going to provide each candidate with two minutes to give a closing statement. And we will begin with Bill Westholm.
That's not fair. No, it's fine. Well, I want to thank everybody for showing up tonight and listening to us and for the good, they were good questions. So thanks for everybody that had a part in this. And that probably ate up 30 seconds of my two minutes, so I better get going. I, I think one of the, one of the first things on the goals of the board, and you see in, in the publications, in, in the board documents, is that their first goal listed is to educate all children. And really, that's what we're about. We're a public school system. And for better or worse, our job, our role is to educate all children. And we have kids who are Harvard-bound and kids who struggle from the time they start school till they graduate or, or leave school. So we have to educate all children. And that's a daunting task that we have to do that, because it isn't easy. And again, we can't pick and choose like some schools can, who's going to be in there, you know, or is it only the most advanced kids or the, or the lowest kids or what? You know, we take them all. And that's our job. And I don't mind, I didn't mind that. I didn't mind it as a teacher. I didn't mind it as a principal. And because I understood that I was a public servant. And so that's where we're at. We have a good district. And I think we can make it better. But our district is, is good. And we have a lot of accomplishments. Can we, can we always, can we improve things? Well, certainly we can. But, but the other thing with the last thing I guess I'll mention we have to remember is, our schools are not in isolation. Our district is not in isolation. We are part of a larger community. And so we have to work with the business community, with the parents, with the, with the students and with everybody in order to make this system work. Thank you again for listening. Thank you.
Well, what is the purpose of public education? It's the idea that all of us come together collectively and decide we want to invest in the future. We want to invest in our community. We want to invest, invest in the next generation. And 27 years ago, everyone in this city decided we're going to continue that investment and move forward. And from that, we got lawyers, journalists, mechanical engineers, computer engineer, United States Marines, Army soldiers, an award-winning chef, an aerospace engineer at NASA, a priest, a policeman, a fireman, and a paramedic, and a pilot in United States Air Force. And that was just at my lunch table. I'm part of that next generation. It's time to hand the keys over and let us decide what to do next. We've been raised by the best. We've been raised by everyone out there in the community. I've been raised by some of these very people who sit alongside me tonight. I'm 27 years old and I want to invest in the future. And I think it's time that you guys say, here's the keys to the car. My name is Ryan Staubert. I'm running for school board at large. You can find out more information at votestaubert.com. Thank you for watching. Thank you for attending tonight.
And again, thank you all for coming out. I'm doing this for my grandmother who lived next door to me on Wellington Street. Both my grandparents, my sets of grandparents came from the old country. They spoke broken English. And the one thing that was imparted on us that was driven into us is how important it was to take advantage of the opportunities given us. And education was a key. There were tears in my grandmother's eyes when I graduated from college. And I'll never forget that. She came from Poland, a very oppressive regime in Poland, and she saw her grandchildren get educated in our Duluth system. And that's why I'm doing this. All of us up here are here to serve. We all have very positive feelings about the school system. And we are all good people. I'm here to continue the work that I've done for 36 years in the Duluth Public School System. I understand curriculums. I understand budgets. I know the buildings. I know a lot of the people. And I have some great ideas on how we can save some money and how we can help our children. I'm on the Whiteside Scholarship Committee. And I get to look at the scholarship applications of a lot of our kids. And you'd be amazed at how smart and how active and how serving our kids are. You might be surprised to find out how many of our kids are in the 99th percentile in the nation on the SAT scores. We do very well in Duluth. A lot of our kids go on, on doctors and attorneys, military officers and all of the other things that Mr. Staubert mentioned. I was given a great education going through Lincoln and going through Denfeld. I'm very happy with my education, very happy with what the citizens of Duluth gave me. And I want to continue working to improve the Duluth Public School System.
Well, I can't agree, couldn't agree more with, with what everyone has said here. Clearly, the people of this community care a great deal. Not just us here, but the whole community does. I've learned that over and over again. I've knocked on hundreds of doors already as part of my campaign. And it's just amazing. As soon as they hear that you're there to talk about schools, their door opens. And they care about it. This community does. But there is, you know, there's some problems here as I see it, that I would like to correct. I just think that when I ask them, well, let me put it this way, when I ask them what they think about the board, some immediately, immediately get angry. And I just think this board has some real serious public relations problems. My opponent was talking about leadership, but I don't think it's leadership to blame the state, to blame the federal government, et cetera, et cetera. I think this board has to finally face up to, to its own responsibilities, the, the results of its policies, and really, really get to back down the financial bedrock and deal with this. If, it's the most important thing in any community, obviously. It's the heart of any community. It's education system. And we simply have to get back to, to financial bedrock here. We've got a great, a great, at least physically, the schools are terrific out there right now. We've, we've done a great investment in one sense, but financially, the finances of this thing could totally erode whatever progress we have out there. And I believe that we need a board that's going to really tackle these problems, not just blame the state, not blame the federal government, but really grab a hold of this thing and be true leaders for this community and reach out again to the community and the large part of this community that feels disenfranchised. You need the full support of your community to have a healthy school district.
I love what we offer in the Duluth Public Schools. When I'm, I'm looking at some of the teachers out there now that I know that are some of the best ones in this district. They have given so much. We have some of the best teachers. And I was privileged enough to have my children have them, to work with many of them. It has made a huge impact on this public school. We have world-renowned music. We have unbelievable science classes. We offer college-in-the-school classes. We have kids that graduate just by taking classes in our high schools. And they have college credit that's worth one, sometimes even two years. But we also have the interventions for kids that maybe are struggling or need a little bit. We have provided so much. Now, with our, our technical programs in the high schools, it's made it more available to more, more of our students to take that in the, in the schools, not having to travel. So that's been a real plus for our kids. You know, I was just thinking about how much I volunteer in the schools. I mean, I, I taught in seven different elementary schools in this district over my 11 years and, and coached two of the high schools. And I was thinking about how much I volunteer now and see how hard our teachers work and how, how well they relate to the students and just the support staff. I love what we offer in Duluth Public Schools, whether it's full range of music, whether it's full range of technical classes, full range of interventions, special ed for the whole area. We are a regional center, so we provide all of these services for the whole area, not just Duluth. So we offer so much. And I am incredibly proud to serve on this board and what we have done, even through some hard decisions. So thank you very much for being here.
John Donahue, 3rd District. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum tonight. And I think we're fortunate in the 3rd District that we have, I think, two great candidates. I have nothing but respect for Mr. Westholm. And earlier in the evening, I made a comment about having two retired administrators and a former teacher on the school board. And I think I ruffled a few feathers, but let's look at it reasonably. What if happened if our founding fathers were retired redcoats? Would the Constitution have been written up the way that it is today? You know, you, you really have to look at, there's a lot of lobbying on behalf of people on the school district. In fact, there is a school administrator out at East, athletic director, using school property to politic for a certain member who's running for the school board. And it's that kind of shenanigans that we have to get away from. I think that we can make a difference in this community. And I think we have some citizens on here who just want to do what's best. And I, I really think that we can make strides in this community and in the school district by thinking outside the box and looking at other alternatives. I really think in the 3rd District, no matter what happens, it's a win-win situation. But I really do worry about the long-term future of the city as far as debt obligations that we have on the books and our children's down the road being able to afford to stay in this community. I do see hope in the school district. The schools have been built, so there's no sense in complaining about these buildings, except when they keep coming for more and more money. We have to say no to it. We got to stay within the budget of what was proposed and it keeps going up. And we have to stop the bleeding now. I just think that, you know, we have to get a line in on this, on the spending. And there's a time we have to say no. And there have to be people out there who are willing to say no and ask the hard questions. I'm John Donahue, running for 3rd District School Board. And it's, and when you go to the polls November 8th, it's not Donna Who, it's Donna Hugh, the average guy working for the average taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes tonight's School Board Candidate Forum. Please join me in thanking our candidates for their attendance here tonight. And I thank all of you for your attendance here tonight. We hope that this program has helped you learn more about the candidates and their positions on the issues of importance to you, so that you can make informed choices at the polls on Election Day. Thank you for coming in on what's been referred to several times tonight as such a beautiful evening and enjoy the rest of your evening.